Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I want to welcome the Board of Public Education members, the Regents, staff, and members of the public who are joining us in person and online. I want to thank MSU in particular for hosting us. Go Cats. That was the big debate. How should I dress tomorrow? I am a cat, so. Dylan, you want to take the role?
Yes, sir. Starting with the Regents, Regent Buchanan.
Here, thanks.
Regent Bowe.
Here.
Regent Dabrowski.
Here.
Regent Lozar.
Here.
Regent Southworth is excused. Regent Folkboard.
Here.
And Regent Mortenson. Board of Public Education, Board Member Tharp.
Here.
Board Member Hedlin.
Here.
Board Member Quinlan.
Here.
Board Member Hammond.
Here.
Board Member Rasmussen is not online, correct? She's excused. She's not, okay. Excused. Board Member Slinger.
Here.
And Board Member Schmidt.
Here.
Superintendent Aronson.
Here.
Commissioner Christian.
Here.
And the Governor is here. We have a quorum.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Dylan. The 2023 Board of Education minutes are in the packet. I assume everyone had a chance to look at those. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. The minutes stand approved. Moving ahead, can I get a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The motion is approved. As you know, we're all primarily here to fulfill our constitutional obligation to adopt a unified education budget for the 2025 legislative session. I appreciate the months of hard work that went into getting to this point from your staff, the staff and the Governor's Budget Office that went into making this possible. Later in the meeting, we'll have a presentation from the Budget Office staff regarding this unified education budget. Before we review and vote on the budget, though, I want to provide each of our offices the opportunity to share our priorities for K through 12 and post-secondary education in Montana. Everyone here, without exception, is dedicated to ensuring our kids receive the best possible education to prepare them for the future so that each person can achieve his or her full potential. I believe our proposed education budget reflects this goal, and I want to take a few minutes to emphasize these things that unite us and that I will work with the legislature in this coming year. When many of us met together earlier this summer with the legislature's education committees, I reflected on our strong accomplishments for education in the 2023 session and throughout the interim. As I said then, future student success depends on classroom innovation, individualized learning, and attracting high-quality educators. I believe our funding priorities and policy goals for education, as reflected in this budget proposal, builds on this success. Our agenda protects record funding for K through 12, public education, and puts the best interests of our students, teachers, and parents at the top of the list. Ultimately, we must ensure students and parents have access to the best education possible. That includes ensuring our teachers are paid well for their work because every worker is due their wages. And teaching is one of the most noble and rewarding professions there is. As a son and a father of high school teachers, I know that personally. In 2021, we worked with legislators to enact the Teach Act to boost starting teacher pay in Montana. In 2023, we worked together to build upon that success by expanding funding. In 2025, we propose we go even further to support our teachers. Our proposed budget invests more than $100 million to boost teacher pay with a particular focus on educators who are starting out their careers in the classroom. In our pro-student, pro-parent, pro-teacher education agenda, we're increasing educational opportunities for Montana students, modernizing education beyond traditional geographic barriers by strengthening the Montana Digital Academy as well. Our budget also empowers more students by expanding on our successful measures to build a stronger, more highly skilled workforce through STEM education, career and technical education, and greater public-private partnerships. When we increase CTE in the classroom, we're boosting the skills of the next generation of workers to meet the needs of employers right now and well into the future. Just coming off the apprenticeship week, we had a 25% increase in the number of apprentices here in Montana just over the last couple of years, so I'm proud of that. Our budget also increases funding for the popular Big Sky Scholarship Program by 20% each year. As you know, the program provides lower and middle-income Montana families with scholarships to access educational opportunities that best meet the needs of their children. Regardless of the school our children attend, they should be focused on learning when they're in the classroom. Too often, however, social media notifications and content tear away at their attention. One statistic shows the average teenager gets over 200 notifications a day on their Ultimately, students in our classrooms should be focused on their teachers and learning, not on TikTok and Instagram. As I've met with school administrators, teachers, and parents throughout our state, I've heard success stories about how plans for cellphone-free schools are working well. To that end, our budget dedicates $1 million for incentives to help schools adopt these cellphone-free policies. To get rid of the distractions, finally, as I've met with administrators, educators, and parents throughout the state who are concerned about the condition of their schools, I've heard stories over and over again, particularly in our rural communities. Some have leaking roofs, some need new boilers, some have trouble with their air conditioning systems that don't work or are about to fail. The list of major maintenance projects goes on and on, and they're, as I mentioned, particularly pronounced in our rural communities. Our budget proposes a one-time-only $81 million investment in the Schools Facilities Trust. This will top off this fund at the maximum appropriation to help local school districts with deferred maintenance to fill the void. A public school system designed for effective teaching and learning is just one of the keys to developing a stronger, brighter future here in Montana. Like our K through 12 schools, there's a lot of great news coming out of the Montana University system as well. Some of our top priorities remain addressing the underlying costs of education, expanding public-private partnership to bring the marketplace closer to the academy, and reinventing the classroom with innovation and targeting and emphasizing on-time graduation. Over the past two years, we've made great progress on these fronts, but as I say, better is always possible, so we have more work to do. Our budget reflects investments in the Montana University system that ensure our universities, two-year, and community colleges have the resources they need to support student success. The MUS budget invests over $70 million in infrastructure and major maintenance to our campuses, with the largest portion of that going to classroom and lab modernization. Along with repairs and upgrades to ensure that our campuses provide the modern learning environment that our students need to make the most of their education, the budget proposal also builds on our efforts to bring education delivery online for all Montanans to access and centralize delivery of the Montana University system for students so people can learn where they are. Finally, our budget is committed to individualized learning and work-based learning, not just in K through 12, but in MUS as well. Through public-private partnerships and an emphasis on career and technical education, funding at our two-year campuses, we are making the college experience more flexible and responsive to Montana's families and industries while reducing costs and time to a degree or credential. And I'm really proud of the work that the Regents have done on the Sprint degrees and the partnership opportunities that has brought forward for private sector firms. Working with you over the last year, we've made good progress. We still have more work to do. It's good to know we're all gainfully employed, isn't it? By leveraging partnerships between industry leaders and our campuses, I'm sure we'll be able to create even better outcomes for our students. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chair Buchanan for an update on the Montana University system.
Governor Gianforte, thank you. Thank you for your remarks, and congratulations on your election. We're excited for another four years of the service that you continue to provide at such a high level for us. Also, congratulations, Superintendent-elect Hedlin. We're excited to get to work with you as we move into 2025. The Board of Regents has appreciated your interest in education at all levels. We value our partnership with you and hope to continue to build on our common interest to ensure that Montanan students from across the state and the educational spectrum receive the highest quality education at the lowest cost. Return on investment is clearly in our focus. They say a budget reflects values. No question that with your budget, Montana values education. We're grateful for that. On behalf of the Board, we want to thank you for the investments in higher education that you've proposed. A solid present law adjustment helped us attend to the inflationary pressures, as well as the $70 million you mentioned in facilities, to modernize our classroom. Vital investments that we've proven in the last four or five years that we're going to complete and make it an easier process for our students to complete on time. We're keenly aware of the sea changes that are happening around us in the workforce, in the political landscape, and the expectations the current students have for the ever-expanding educational options after high school. With 16 campuses across the state, the MUS is a large and multifaceted organization. But the Board, our Commissioner, our system leadership are committed to ensuring that we remain flexible enough to anticipate and respond to the educational and economic demands in an environment that evolves at an incredible speed. As the 69th Legislature convenes and with the proposed budget as you've laid out, the MSU intends to effectively tell our story, communicate the strides we have made, and continue to be making to a public post-secondary education system for all resident Montanans, maintaining and strengthening our relationship with our legislative partners, and renew our pledge of accountability to the taxpayers, the students, and the families who entrust their students with us and their futures. As part of that promise of our accountability, the MUS has worked diligently to establish shared policy goals. Thank you for being at the table with us on those, and also with the legislature, which we revisit each session and which help guide us with our strategic planning. The shared policy goals have long recognized the importance of accessibility, affordability, and the need for a wide and innovative variety of pathways from the high school to the collegiate career. A traditional brick-and-mortar-based four-year degree is still a preferred option for many of our students who enter the system, and we certainly intend to sustain and grow those offerings, as well as advance our graduate degree programs and build on our reputation as an exceptional research and technological hub. We visited the new Innovation Campus today here at MSU, incredibly attractive for high-quality technology, and I know you've had a role in helping steward that. Thank you. But we also know that the expectations for post-secondary education have for years now been moving well beyond the traditional four-year pathway. It didn't just happen overnight, and I'm proud to assure this Board today that the MUS already has in place successful programs aimed squarely at responding to the workforce needs, streamlining the application and transfer process, strengthening our ties with our K through 12 partners, and providing an increasing number of career-focused expedited degree and training options, things like micro-credentials, Sprint degrees. You've charged us to be innovative. I think we're delivering. To name just a few, the System Sprint Degree Program, CTE, and dual enrollment opportunities, which we learned about today, are creating so many more opportunities for high school students to complete their post-secondary education in that four-year timeframe that we, as parents, hope to be able to do. But we can't stop there. Better is always possible, and we have no intention of doing so. To meet the moment as a system, through innovative and creative thinking, they must remain the tenants of how we think about the mission in front of us. It is more important than ever that the MUS makes efficient use of its resources as we anticipate the needs of both our students and the state to build on what is working and find new ways to provide the services that are central to our mission. The MUS has the will, the passion, and the innovative spirit to evolve with the times. And I know I speak for our Board and this group of the Board of Public Ed when I say we're excited to be on the front lines to help Montana's higher education system into the future. I do want to take my last moment to thank every member of this Board of Public Education. It's been fun and interesting to work with you over the years. We're looking forward to another fantastic year of collaboration. Mr. Governor, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Buchanan. At this time, the Board would hear from Chair Tharp and Superintendent Aronson.
Thank you. Thank you, Governor. Thank you, Commissioner. And I have distinguished the Board of Regents as well as the Board of Public Ed. I'm looking back before I even discuss anything further. I have given the Board of Public Ed a lot of homework with accreditation. What is a quality school in Montana? As well as the 11 teaching and learning standards, there's only one left to be unwrapped. We have a new assessment, and thank you for your partnership with that. Proud to say, as I did when I was sitting in this wonderful room with the Board of Regents yesterday, that the window closes on our very first three-year assessment today. Federal government requires 95% participation. We had every single one of our K-8 schools participate in the mass assessment this year, as well as over 97% in reading and close to that in math as of this morning, and the window closes today. Very encouraged that learning and teaching are happening together at the same time, learning for the student but learning also for that teacher as we embark and move forward. So lots of things have happened in these past eight years, and I'm excited, Superintendent-elect Hedlin, for you to take the reins of this, to recognize the good work of the staff, the partnership with the Board of Public Ed coming from your role currently as vice chair, as well as working with post-secondary. We all know that the mantra is that when it comes to kids and graduating high school, where do they go next? What does that pathway, that investment, or that precious tax dollar take them? I'm pleased to see, Governor, in your budget that you are looking forward in that regard. One size does not fit all for a student nor for a teacher. So having an understanding that a teacher in a classroom can have choices as well within choice of public school, choice of a community school as well. Very pleased that I have a Teacher of the Year, and I know we're on the agenda for that a little bit later. But I wouldn't be a teacher if I didn't hand out a ditto. So there is something. I don't know where it came from, if it's still, if it's gone all the way through. Excellent. Number one, the first thing for the legislative priorities for K-12 education is that promise. I use that term not lightly, but very, very heartwarmingly. When I was a state legislator, both in the House and then concluding in the Senate, we got education funding to public schools prior or just right at transmittal. Governor, if there's a promise, we could pinky promise. If we could get this legislative body, 150 of them, to that, then it eases the pressure so budgets can be developed with that promise as a promise. And I know you've included that in your budget, and I'm grateful. The other part that we have, we have a lucky 13 that are here, and they will be legislators that are carrying this. Some of these are embedded in your budget, and I'm very grateful for that. I'm going to come back to that assessment that we talked about with third grade through eighth grade and over 96% to 97% of those concluding it. Board of Public Ed, Governor's Office, Board of Regents, we must work together for that secondary look. Grateful for that partnership of ACT. That is no longer going to be viable for us moving forward for those students that are in 11th grade. It must be done before spring of '27. So we have a lot of work that we have to do because it's coming soon. What does it mean for a student to conclude K-12 education and move on to that next step in their journey of life? That would be the one thing that I would ask for our partnership. There are other things that are more intricate that are in those bullet points. But I do want to say, as we go into this week of Thanksgiving, that I am thankful for the opportunity to support public education. I'm thankful for an opportunity to be in a partnership with many people that are here around this table and many that support as well. And with that, Governor, I'll pass this over to Dr. Tharp. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Aronson. For the Board of Public Education, people ask, what do we do? And there's a lot of misconception about what we do, what we don't do, and all of those sort of things. But I can tell you, one of the things that we have been doing, if I could put it all into one word over the last several years, is innovation and flexibility. The charter schools, number one, that the legislature gave us last session, we have a whole bunch of charter schools opening across the state, and we have 11 more applications to review this next month, and just some very, very exciting things happening. Not every student learns in the same manner. Not everybody teaches in the same manner, and trying to get those matched up to be able to help students is vital. So I'm really excited about those charter schools that we've opened up. We're looking at the math standards. I'm a recovering math teacher. From over 30-some years ago, I first came to this campus to learn the basics on how to be a math teacher, and I've loved it ever since. The problem is that we have so much of a disconnect, and people say, well, I don't understand math. Well, there's two reasons to learn math. One of them is to learn it for math's sake if you plan on being an engineer and going into those fields. But also, math teaches you how to think. And so we have a very robust change coming from the Office of Public Instruction with the math standards, and so that's one of the things that we're working on right now. And then the question is, how do we implement that into the schools? How do we make that happen? And it's going to be a heavy lift, and it's going to require a lot of work. Along with those other flexibilities and innovations is flexibility in teacher licensure. Not everybody out there is able to go straight from high school to go to a four-year campus and get a standard four-year teaching degree. Life situations are different for everyone, and there's a lot of people out in the world who can become phenomenal teachers with a different approach. So I'm really excited about the alternative licensure pathways that we've been able to open up. And then the biggest one is just the total and complete revision of our accreditation standards and how do we accredit schools. It used to be, back when I was an early career superintendent, it was a checkbox system. Do you have this? Do you have this? Do you mean all of these ratios? Now it requires the entire school community to be thinking about, what are you doing? Why are you doing that? What are our priorities, and how do we achieve those priorities? And the most forward-facing on that might be the portrait of a graduate, but there are so many things that force you to look inside and have true continual improvement going on. And so that's just some of the revisions that we have going on and the innovations and trying to make our schools the best they possibly can. And, Mr. Governor, I'm really excited about hearing about these budget priorities. I was in a lot of buildings that really could have used access to that $81 million, and I know there's a lot of administrators out there very excited about that, and I thank you for your continued support of education.
Chair Tharp, Superintendent Aronson, thank you for your work for all the students. And as a point of just personal privilege, I just want to thank you, Superintendent, for eight years in your office, serving students. We wish you the best. And I want to turn it back over to you. We have a little special presentation for the introduction of the 2025 Montana Teacher of the Year. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Governor, and all of us here that are in the room and even across our state. Every classroom is filled with a teacher, a teacher who is heartfelt, a teacher who has come from our university system or even beyond, as Dr. Tharp had mentioned, with flexibilities. It is my honor to recognize Dawn Severs to this conversation here. She's going to share just a little bit about her passion. But I want you to know that when you raise your hand and say, I want to be the Teacher of the Year, it's not easy. We tried to streamline the process. We have a great opportunity to recognize regional cultural teachers across the year and Montana, but behind her, we have such a wonderful, passionate group of Teachers of the Year. So with that, Dawn, take it away.
Well, my name is Dawn Severs, and I come from Power Schools. It is about 30 miles north of Great Falls, Montana, and I teach kind of an eclectic array of subjects, which is unusual. I teach Spanish, 7th through 12. I teach 7th grade English and art, which is 7th through 12. So I have a very eclectic Renaissance-type of day. And somebody asked me what my passion is and why I became a teacher. And I come from a very underprivileged background. I was a very at-risk child, never saw myself graduating from high school, let alone university, and becoming a teacher. I think education changed the entire trajectory, not only of my life, but an entire generation. I was a child that couldn't read in the 4th grade, and a teacher saved my life. She just saved my life. And I guess there was nothing more that I wanted to do in life when I became an educator than have that exact same opportunity to do for other students. And a passion of mine is the public school system because if we, all the best teachers leave, and all the best families and the best students leave, and everybody evacuates, who's going to be there for students like I was? And so that is why I became a teacher, because there is really nothing more honorable than fighting for our children. Thank you.
Dawn, on behalf of a very grateful state, thank you for your service to our students and our kids. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Hall and Ben Turnz with our Budget Office to present our Unified Education Budget and answer any Board Member questions.
Good afternoon. Nancy Hall. I'm in Helenas, so glad to be with you this afternoon. I believe they're going to put up on the screen the Unified Budget. And this consists of just the dollar amounts that were actually spent in '24 for each of those agencies, the appropriated amounts for '25, and then what's in the Governor's Budget for '26 and '27. You can see at the bottom the percent change for the biennium, between the two biennium. And Ben and I are available. I believe Ben's in the room with you, and we're available for questions.
Who has the first question?
Does Ben maybe want to come up and talk about the university? Hi, everyone. Hi, Governor. Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I'll highlight some of the higher education pieces of the Unified Budget here. So for fiscal year '26 and '27, you'll see an overall growth rate in the general fund of $63 million. In state special and other revenue sources, you'll see a growth of $7.2 million. So overall, an increase of around 11% to the budget for the next biennium. I'll also highlight a couple of new proposals and areas of support in the Governor's Budget. One of those is $350,000 for support of the central application system of the MUS. And I'll also highlight $1 million over the biennium to help start-up funding for a hybrid online JD Law program at the University of Montana. So thank you for supporting those initiatives and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Ben, why don't you stay at the podium there? I'm sure there will be some questions. Who would like to go first? You must have done a perfect job.
Yeah. Nope. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Is there any discussion at the Board of the Budget?
Mr. Governor, if I could?
Yes.
Thank you. New proposals for K-12. There is one item that has a transfer of $525,000 that is a state general match to a federal program. And I recognize that legislation may have to occur with this. We don't have much information on what this means. I do believe that this is a program for adult education, and we do a lot of work with HISA for credit recovery for all of those for adults that may have been displaced out of the K-12 system, not knowing where they are. This is the WEOWA program. So there is no new money added in, and I'm appreciative of that. There are two and a half FTEs in our office that do work within the Adult Ed and the HISA and all of that. So if we can, I'm in support of this budget, I want to say that. I should have said that upfront. But I would like a little bit more information for our staff to recognize what does it mean for them as this budget transfer occurs. Efficiency in government is tremendously important. I recognize we are a growing older state, and we need a workforce that's going to support us, and we want to make sure that there is a pathway for all individuals that recognize our constitutional opportunities in education. So a little bit more information. Doesn't have to happen today, but I would like to have some more understanding. I know we have inquired to the Budget Office inquired to the Budget Office regarding this 525 transfer, but a little bit more information of what the logistics of the bill might be, how that might occur, and all of that. And with that, I am in concurrence with your budget.
Okay.
And very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Dylan is happy to work with your office out of our office and see. And as you know, I get to propose the budget. The legislature still has their way with it. So I'm sure there will be some modifications. At this time, we'll go to public input. If there's any... Yeah.
Governor, I was wondering if Nancy Hall could maybe take a couple of minutes to talk about the, how the money will be targeted for major maintenance for schools, the 81 million.
Okay. Nancy, did you get that question?
I did get that question, and I'm happy to answer what I know. At this time, the proposal is that the 81 million will be to complete the, to the cap, the $300 million cap to the COLLE subtrust fund, and the interest off of that will be utilized for the state major maintenance aid program. And there's proposed legislation that will potentially change the formula for that. It's still in the works.
So this is an existing program. The $81 million basically tops off the fund. But there was a discussion about making sure that these funds are particularly available for rural schools, because they have, don't have as large a tax base. So we might have some modifications to the funding that would give some advantage to rural schools.
Governor, if I could just add to this discussion, the COVID dollars were $600 million that in the very beginning, they came in three buckets. Very beginning was on the remediation of the virus. We didn't know what was happening, what kind of health and safety issue there might be regarding that. But as we journeyed forward from 2020, recognizing there was much flexibility, and a lot of schools did remediate their buildings, and they chose to do that with those dollars. So we have great information, and I'm sitting here on campus here. We used Dr. Carley Urban here in their economics department, and we gave them lots of data. So there is great information moving forward to recognize who did use that for facility remediation and who might need to be in more so, so that apples and apples can be worked. But just to show that there was great remediation of our buildings that was used through that federal one-time-only money. Thank you, Governor.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions amongst the Board or Regents? Yes.
Thank you, Governor. Just wanted to say that I'm grateful for the budget and the dedication to education in Montana. And just, this is a good example, our previous discussion and what Member Quinlan just brought up, that, you know, you're hearing from the field and taking that into consideration, and look forward to working with our schools and putting this to good use. Thank you.
Yeah, I was up in Columbia Falls, and their school needs a roof, and Gardner needs a boiler, and it's just very pedestrian things. But it's kind of hard to educate if you don't have heat, and there's water in the classrooms. So... Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to public comment. If there's anyone from the public, please step up to the podium, or if you're online, and state and spell your name for the record. And we are asking you to keep your comments to three minutes. And if there are people online that don't want to come to the podium, you can also send comment to dylan.clapmire@mt.gov. He's in the Governor's Office. Sir?
Thank you, Governor, and members of the Board. My name is Gary Lusin, L-U-S-I-N, and I'm a lifelong Montana native. Been on the Bozeman School Board for 20 years, served on the MTSBA Board of Directors for 13 years, was able to participate in the Dean's Advisory Council for MSU Dean of Education, Health, and Human Development. Was on that for eight years. And related to that was my involvement in every legislative session since 1987, including through interims. Many of those sessions, I was heavily involved. The point I'm trying to make, which gave me my reason for convening a meeting this October to gather key education stakeholders from around the state, was to learn about our system of education. And the reason, two things led me to that. One is the analogy Representative Lou Jones has given to us in the past about getting all our tractors aligned in the same direction for the same purpose. The other piece of that is our Constitution, Article 10, Section 1. "It is the goal of the people to establish a system of education which will develop the full educational potential of each person." What I've learned through my experience at all the meetings I've been in is the process under which significant topics are discussed. So I've been in many different meeting formats. The one format that I've learned is the most effective is a well-facilitated consensus-type meeting that brings all the stakeholders together. I was able to get two facilitators for the meeting. Diane Groves from Whole System Performance, who some of you may know. She's worked with our district for years, very good facilitator. She was the main facilitary of the meeting, asking the right questions in the right sequence to lead people to a good conclusion. The other facilitator was Janice Case from NCEE, who was a facilitator at the Constitutional Partner Meeting this last June 17. And she provided us information about how high-functioning systems around the world function, what their systems are like, including in the U.S. In the U.S., we have Nevada, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Mississippi, and Michigan are in the process of really revisiting their system of education. So I believe our state has the opportunity to do this. And I think having a process and structure like this in place, some commission or some committee, would address a lot of the questions and issues I've heard at this meeting today. I think it could inform you very well with well-thought-out information about how to make some reasonable changes within our system. I will now turn it over to members who are at the meeting, different stakeholders, and they can give you their perspective. Thank you very much.
Okay. If we could restrict... Thank you, sir. I think innovation's always helpful. We're going to restrict comments right now to budget-specific items. We're going to have another time at the end for public comment not related to the budget. So if you don't mind holding, is there any public comment about the budget? Okay. If there's no additional comment on the budget, there'll be a time at the end for the other comments. Do we have a motion to approve the budget?
So move.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We'll now move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the budget is approved. Thank you for your support. At this time, Chair Tharp is going to lead a discussion on the proposed math attainment resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. As Gary just shared, with system of education, and it's not just K-12, it's not just higher ed, and even within the school districts, it's not just the elementary school, and it's not the junior high teachers or just the high school teachers. It's everybody working together. And it also includes our local school boards. And our local graduation requirements are determined by the local school boards. The Board of Public Ed does set the minimums. We do that with the recommendation of the Office of Public Instruction. Through rule, we set the absolute minimums. We encourage, obviously, that you go above and beyond those minimums. One such area is within the math scores. And this is a resolution that was passed earlier today by the Board of Public Education, recognizing that the process on how a local school district determines how many math credits they want to require for graduation is a locally decided item. Also, very logistically, making a change takes time. It takes money. It has to originate through the Office of Public Instruction, through the negotiated rulemaking process and all of that. We feel that it's vital to be able to get this information out. And this is something that the university system, and specifically Dr. Angela McLean, has been in communication with me about for years, on how do we make this change? How do we encourage schools to do more? And as Dr. Slinger from Miles Community College continues to point out at our board meetings there, our achievement scores in Montana are not where we want them to be. And I think everybody is in complete agreement on that. We want better for our students. Just requiring everybody to add a third year may not do that. That's looking at an outcome rather than looking at the system. And so, if you take a look at this resolution, it really emphasizes that everybody together has a stake in this, in working with the Office of Public Instruction, working within the framework of those new standards that we have, I just talked about earlier, that we're going to be approving come January, working with the university system and through the Commissioner or Higher Education's Office, on all of these different things there. So what this resolution does is recognize that the current graduation requirements in Montana are two units of mathematics, and we are recommending two things. One of them is that schools consider, if they're still at two, that they raise that to three. But then also, and the most powerful part of this, is be it further resolved that the Montana Board of Regents and the Montana Board of Public Education encourage the Office of Public Instruction and the Officer or Commissioner of Higher Education to create a collaborative process to identify comprehensive strategies and increase math proficiency in support of college and career attainment, including strengthening the ability of Montana high schools to offer a third year of mathematics. It is a system. It is everybody here. And so, I recommend passage of this resolution by this board.
Mr. Governor. Okay. Discussion on the proposal? Would only add that we, as a board, have already agreed that we're unanimously in support of this resolution, Mr. Governor. Okay. And this came from the Board of Ed, so Regents. And so, I think you need a... Do you want to handle the vote? You want me to do the vote? Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt this?
Mr. Governor, I move adoption of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in... Is there any additional discussion? Yes.
I just have one comment to make. We had a lot of great discussion about this, and one thing that's important to consider is that we make sure this is not a barrier for students' graduations. And so, we talked about different pathways and partnering with others to have math for the trades and all different versions to meet the needs of our students across the state of Montana. And so, we look forward to being innovative with this again. Thank you.
Okay. And before we vote, we would like to welcome any public comment on this resolution. If anyone from the public would like to make their thoughts known, please step up to the podium, state your name, and spell the last one, and we'd love to hear from you. Anyone wish to make their thoughts known? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you. At this time, the State Board of Education will take public... Oh, this is the time for open comment. I know we have some people chomping at the bit over here. So we'll take public comment on any matters under the Board's jurisdiction. If you have public comment, please step up, spell your name, and any organization you represent, and we'll just ask you to keep your comments within three minutes.
Hello, Governor Gianforte and the Board. My name is Trevor Nichols, N-I-C-H-O-L-S, and I had the privilege to attend the meeting of educational stakeholders that Gary Lusin had spoken of earlier. I'm currently a teacher, teaching high school sciences in the Bozeman School District. I found the meeting to be extremely valuable in bringing the teachers' perspective to the overall educational system. Oftentimes, our current teachers are concerned that while we are those providing the instruction, childcare, and often well-being services on a daily basis, we have little voice in the educational decision-making. This meeting allowed for our collective current teacher voice to be shared. It was powerful for me to see just how many other stakeholders who are not involved on the front lines as teachers were involved in the education decision-making process. And it was also extremely informative to hear these stakeholder perspectives. What was surprising was regardless of urban, rural, or any number of differences between stakeholders and their communities, is how much every stakeholder in the room was on the same page. Our current system of education need not only be evaluated, but that strategic changes are necessary in order to provide the excellence in education the young individuals of our state deserve. The wheel need not be reinvented. We can look to the states mentioned prior in Gary Lusin's statement to seek guidance on the structures and processes needed to allow for a unified and consensus amongst stakeholders. It is my hope our state will acknowledge the need for change and implement similar formal structures and processes. We owe it to our children and the great state of Montana. Thank you, Governor Gianforte and the Board, for your consideration of my comments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Hello, Governor. Hello, Board members. My name is Lazlo Baumgartner, B-A-U-M-G-A-R-D-N-E-R. I'm a student at Gallatin High School here in Bozeman, so a student in the Bozeman School District. And I also had the opportunity to participate in the meeting last month, hosted by Gary and several other members of our Bozeman community and Montana community as a whole. So I'd just like to thank you guys for allowing me to speak here today. Once again, incredible opportunity as a student. However, that kind of connects into what is the greatest challenge as students in the Montana system of education. So last month, during the system of education's consensus meetings, it became clear that we need to reassess and improve the process by which we approach the education in Montana. Our discussion highlighted many things that Montana does well. Our system is largely successful and has been adapted to meet the evolving needs of society. As we can see here today, so many great things that are happening now. We're moving in the right direction, and there's no need to deny that. However, we also have to recognize a critical issue that currently exists, a disconnect between the various stakeholders in the educational process. This disconnect creates significant gaps, leaving some important voices, including the students, teachers, and many other stakeholders, out and unheard within the discussion of how our education process should proceed. If we were to move forward effectively, these gaps must be addressed in order to make informed and inclusive decisions that truly benefit all students. As a student, I have been fortunate to have these opportunities to voice my concerns before boards such as this one, but I know that not all students are afforded those same opportunities. It is crucial, as we move forward, in establishing the future goals and approaches for Montana's education system, that we actively engage all stakeholders. This includes our students, our teachers, our parents, support staff, and policymakers, truly anyone who plays a role in shaping our educational system. The reality is, if you ask most students, they will tell you they care deeply about their education, and I can attest to that. Speaking to my peers, they care about their education. This is our future. They want to be heard and to have a say in the decisions that directly affect their learning experiences. In order to ensure that we are truly addressing the needs of our school, it is imperative that all voices are included in the conversation. This approach will lead to a more informed, effective decision-making process that can better support not only our students, but our system as a whole, ensuring that all the needs of all stakeholders and bodies involved in this process are heard and valued, allowing us to reach our full potential. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for taking the time and being here. You're going to be a good citizen.
Good afternoon, Governor and Board members. My name is Sandy Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N. I'm a mom of two kids who have been educated in the public school systems in the Valley, a retired public school teacher of 33 years, and a current trustee on the BSD 7 Board. My service on the school board is the perspective I'd like to speak to today. I attended the Montana System of Education Collaborative in October that Gary Lusin has spoken about, and wearing my trustee hat. A diverse group of educational stakeholders from around the state examined our current educational system, using the consensus process our district has used for mega-issues for years. Listening and learning from each other, we identified the worst possible outcomes should the current system continue to guide how schools are funded, supported, and operated. The list was sobering. After learning about the high-performing educational systems in the U.S. and the world, we then constructed a list of best possible outcomes should we all commit to changing our current system so we could better serve students in our classrooms today and in the future. Those best possible outcomes inspired us as a group to commit to pushing forward for a strong, consistent process that would allow us to do the a strong, consistent process that would allow us to do the work and an advisory commission comprised of major stakeholders that would build a bridge with lawmakers to engage, inform, and advise them about educational needs and challenges. In closing, I would like to share how we begin every board meeting. Our mission statement is read by the chair, which reads, "Bozeman Public Schools exist to ensure high-level learning for all students." This sets the stage to remind the board why the district exists, the work we need to do, and who we are serving. This is important to reflect on and evaluate as we move into the future. The combination of strong, consistent process and advisory commission to the legislature would allow major educational stakeholders to work together to ensure high-level learning for all Montana students. My hope is that we can do this work together and work with the state to get it done. I thank you for your time and your service to Montana kids. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Governor and members of the board. My name is Carrie Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R. I am the current Finance Director for Belgrade School District and also on the Board of Directors for the Montana Association of School Business Officials. Thank you for your dedication to the education of students in Montana. It means a lot. As you know, Montana's constitution defines education as more than just reading, writing, and math. It requires schools to provide students with other services such as meals, social and emotional support, extracurricular activities, work experience, and other valuable education choices to help them reach their full potential. Unfortunately, our current funding system isn't really providing for those responsibilities for schools. As a Montana resident, I understand the need for tax reductions. However, balancing increased effectiveness, meaningful services, and funding without overburdening local residents is going to be a complex challenge for our legislature. No single entity can solve this problem alone. We need a coalition of stakeholders, students like Lazlo, who's amazing, because I got to spend two days with him and he's awesome. We need parents, educators, administrators, business leaders, policymakers, and communities to come together to work to find a fair, sustainable solution for Montana's K-12 schools. Public money needs to stay with public schools and support students equitably. By gathering the best and the brightest, we can tackle the root causes, not just the symptoms. Recently, I had the privilege of attending an educational summit organized by Gary Lusin, thank you, Gary, that was an amazing two days, where the future of education in Montana was discussed. One of the most powerful aspects of the event was seeing the right people in the room, all coming together to discuss how we can address pressing issues surrounding K-12 education. Having key stakeholders at the table not only facilitated important conversations, but also gave me hope for the future. I urge all policymakers and legislators to base their decisions on the real needs of Montana children, not partisan lines, and to prioritize our public education system this legislative session. Thank you so much for your time, and go Cats.
Thank you.
Governor Gianforte, I rise now. As a lifelong Montana citizen, a parent, a grandparent, an elected county superintendent, I'm a rural pastor of four churches, and I am a mental health trainer and advocate. And I want to thank you at this time in this public session for your letter that you issued to the schools recommending the getting rid of the cell phones. A book that changed my perspective on so many different things was The Anxious Generation by Dr. Jonathan Haidt. And I'm currently working on how to get boxes of those to anybody in my community who would like to take the time to read it. It is talking about the mental health challenges that so many of our students face. It looks at the origins of it, but most importantly, what can we do now? And within all of the various mental health classes that I teach, supporting educators and parents out there, the distraction, the bullying, everything that's associated with the amazing technology and tool that has been abused, and I just want to applaud you for your efforts. And that's one of the reasons I felt that a resolution could be so powerful, is that the Board of Public Ed, the Board of Regents, OPI, all of us could have recommended getting rid of the cell phones, and it would have created a whole flurry of activity. Greg, send out a letter and look at the wonderful success in the state. Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, sir. I would encourage everybody to read The Anxious Generation. Powerful. Yes?
Governor Gianforte, members of the board, thank you for your time today. My name is Bridger Beach, B-E-A-C-H. I'm a student at MSU Northern. Born and raised in Montana, I'm a product of the Montana public school system. I just want to say thank you, guys, for the efforts you're putting towards that and the positive changes that you're looking to bring to it. I come to you today with a concern of mine and some other students. The information is from the March 2024 edition of the NEA Higher Education Faculty Salary Analysis. And I just wanted to point out, as you go into the present law adjustments and looking into the budget for the next two years, that professors in the state of Montana are 46th in the nation in earnings and salaries. And the opportunities I've had in higher education in the state of Montana are invaluable and will stick with me for the rest of my life, and that wouldn't be possible without the great educators that I've had to experience in my time here. And I just want you to keep in mind just that as you head into this next session. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, Governor Gianforte and members of the Board of Education. My name is Tricia Seifert, S-E-I-F-E-R-T. And I have the honor to serve as the Dean of the College of Education, Health, and Human Development here at Montana State University. I also serve as the co-chair of the Montana Council of Deans of Education, or MCD. This is a body of those who lead the accredited educator preparation programs located in Montana. It includes five public universities, three private colleges, and two tribal colleges. I took part in the Future of the System of Education meetings previously represented and referred to as a member of the education preparation programs. We are instrumental in setting the course for those who are entering the teaching profession, and we work in close collaboration with our school partners. What takes place in K-12 schools informs our ed preparation programs. As we look to the future of the system of education, we should examine the pathway into the profession. This morning, data were presented at the Board of Education regarding the number of completers across Montana of our educator preparation programs. Of the most recent data from academic year 2022-23, and comparing that to 2011-12, so about a decade earlier, the number of completers in Montana is down by 33%. We should compare that to the national decline of 25% in this same timeframe. Also this morning, Julie Mergle, Chief Operating Officer at the Office of Public Instruction, shared that approximately 50% of those completers of Montana's programs are seeking Montana licensure, which would suggest that 50% are not. I think about this, about the pathway into the profession. A week ago, I had the opportunity to meet with an FFA student just in the board ballrooms next door, and I asked her if she was interested in being an educator, an ag education student specifically. And she said, "My mom is a teacher. She's been doing it for years, and this is her last year. She can't do it anymore. It's become too difficult." Just yesterday, I heard from students in our aspiring educators program who said, one student said, "My parents really encouraged me not to become a teacher." And it made me think about one of our educators at the meeting that said, "What if no one wants to become a teacher? Where will that leave us as a society, as a community, as a workforce, and an economy?" And so with all of those hats that I wear, I just share that the conversation about the future of the system of education is critical and timely, and one we must engage in fully and collectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Governor and Board of Regents. My name is Sarah Hayes, H-A-Y-S. I am the final member from those who attended the meeting in October to speak today. My role was as an administrator, and that's what I will talk to you from that point of view. This is my 31st year serving as an educator in the Bozeman Public Schools, and I thank you for that opportunity to speak today. For the last 15 years, I've held various administrative roles in the Bozeman Schools. As an administrator, it's my responsibility to help run the best possible schools for students, staff, and families. A school should be a place not only where students receive a top-notch education, but also a place where they feel safe, feel cared for, feel supported, and have a sense of community. Creating a top-notch school cannot be done without administrators who listen to and learn from their stakeholders, who understand challenges, who celebrate accomplishments, who continue to grow by studying and learning, and who lead by informed decision-making, and finally, who are always striving to be better. Collaboration and a focus on learning and growing together for the best possible outcome for students is at the forefront of the work that schools do. Additionally, great schools do not exist without a shared vision and mission for the future of the organization and the students they serve. As we continue to live in a challenging educational environment, it is critical that as a state, we are doing the work of a top-notch school. And just as administrators cannot work in isolation, as a state, we need to be working together to envision and better our system of education. This was the work that was done in early October. Stakeholders from around the state worked together through a well-facilitated consensus process to learn, listen, grow, and problem-solve. The process was powerful and enlightening, and the ideas of how to re-envision our system of education was inspiring. I highly encourage the board to continue this work across the state. There is no task more important than ensuring the bright future for our children. Bringing together passionate and committed stakeholders and taking them through this process is the first step to create a common vision of what an ideal system of education entails. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone else wish to make their thoughts known? Okay. Well, thank you all for a very productive meeting, particularly to the Regents, the Board of Ed, Superintendent, Commissioner, and for the members of the public that took their time. It's critically important that we hear from you, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here today. I'm optimistic about the expanded opportunities that we'll be able to provide for our students, families, and educators this upcoming legislative session. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.